This is the December 7th, 2020 meeting of the Planning Board. It is a little past 7:00 PM. Meeting has been duly noticed. Chairwoman will read from the notification as she typically does, and then we'll take roll and commence the meeting.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of the meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of the notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines of the virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. All microphones of public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during that time only, please use the raise hand button in Zoom if on a computer, or dial *9 if you are on a telephone. Your name or last four digits of your phone number will be called when is your turn to speak. If at any time during your question, you are deemed to be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and we'll make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public's comment session only, the public will have three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting. Please identify yourself before you speak at all times. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via AP TV. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call the roll. One other item. Madam Chairwoman, that we should have mentioned in our opening remarks is that public participation, although limited to three minutes, and it's also limited to one comment. You cannot come back and ask, make additional comments.
Right.
Okay. The roll call for this evening. Mayor Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Sorry, here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Jennifer Sauter?
Here.
Trudy Syfax? Absent. Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Eric Galipo?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Here.
And Chairwoman Krzak?
Here.
We have a full eight-member board, including the alternate, or nine, wait, sorry.
Do we, Jack, do we have to go through the resolution, pass the resolution?
Which one?
For the executive order?
No, you should do that before we go into exec.
Okay. All right, so then we have one item up for discussion today, having to do with the amendments to the...
Oh, Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
Before we launch into that, on the screen, application 2027th Avenue?
Yes.
Would like to be carried to date certain?
Yes, okay. For the Board's edification, I spoke to the attorney today, and after speaking to Chairwoman, we're not sure if the changes that they're going to make are going to be substantial, if any. So what I indicated to him is that I would recommend to the Board that the matter be carried without further notice in the, to February 8th, I think that's the date.
Yeah.
Unless there's a submission that includes any material modifications or amendments to the application, in which case, the applicant will be required to renotice all the property owners within 200 feet. And with that, I would ask the Board to consider a motion to that effect.
I move to approve the February 8th date, and only if there's, without notice, only if there are no major modifications, and if there are, then notice will be required.
Jim Henry, so moved. Thank you. Roll call will be, John Moore?
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Galipo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Barbara Krzak?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Okay, then the item we have for discussion is a council referral of 2020 City of Asbury Park Land Development Regulations and Zoning Amendments. It was continued from October 5th. And Michelle Alonso is here to review.
Okay, keeping that in mind, since this was a continuation, all the members that are present this evening were present at the last meeting, so everyone is eligible to participate as well as vote. I would like to have Michelle, Michael, and Donna sworn at the same time, since I'm sure we're going back and forth between the three of them for commentary. So the three of you, would please raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear that testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please, starting with Michelle, then Donna, and then Michael, please tell us your affiliation with the Board.
Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning and Redevelopment with the City of Asbury Park, and I'm a licensed professional planner.
Donna?
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Michael?
Michael Sullivan, Board Planner.
Thank you, thank you.
So on that note, I will start my presentation. I'll start screen sharing in one moment. What I'm going to present tonight, at this moment, is the continuation of our discussion, and some of the edits that were requested at the last meeting regarding signs, lighting, street trees, fences. And I'm also going to cover... Well, actually, I'm going to start with that. And then we will launch into, and then we will take public question, we will take public comment, before we launch into what we call Part Two of the zoning amendments. So I'm going to start to share my screen. So I'm going to go over the memo provided to us by Donna Miller and Michael Sullivan of Clark, Keaton, Hins.
For the record, that is Exhibit B6. And also for the record, I'm sorry, I was remiss, the letter of Kevin Kennedy requesting the adjournment with the extension of time within which to act is Exhibit B-001. Thank you.
So... There are about 10 changes we discussed last time to signs. The first one was to add a definition for blade sign. You will find this on page two. Sign blade, a type of projecting sign that is mounted perpendicular to the building facade. So by the way, I think the preference, if a Board member has a question that you ask me after I read out the change, I think that would probably be best. So then the next, oops, then the next, oh, wait, what is... Okay, there we go. So the next change is on page three, and there's a definition added for projecting, sign projecting, a sign mounted, a sign mounted perpendicular to the building facade. Then our next change is on page 10, which is amends to limit area of the signs on a bus shelter enclosure. This is K. You'll see bus bench advertising signs, bus shelter advertising signs that exceed 25% of the area of the vertical face of a bus shelter structure. So bus shelter signs are permitted, but it has to go by this requirement. Next change is on page 19, which was a spelling correction in the footnote, in special category sign table. Then page 21 is a change, the number of times a year garage sale signs may be displayed. And that is number four, where my cursor is. Duration temporary garage yard sale sign may not be displayed for a period longer than three days, three times a year, three times was added. Then on page 22.
Michelle, I'm sorry, it's John Moore, can I interrupt you for one second?
Of course.
I thought there was a change on page 11.
I'm sorry if I skipped one.
The two that I emailed you about, okay?
Yes, but I thought...
Broke out, but they weren't in bold, so to me, they're still changes.
Right, so go to page 11. Yes, signs painted directly on a building was struck. Thank you, Mayor, for refreshing my memory on that. So then our... Page 22, which the change is 30-61.16C, identification, projecting signs, blade signs, the clarification we asked for about blade signs. So then, page, our next change is on the next page, page 23.
Michelle, John again, I'm sorry, and maybe I missed it when I was asking another question. How about the correction on page 21, where the right number of yard sales was added, and that was corrected?
Yes, I mentioned that, yes, three times.
Okay, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, my bad.
No, no, it's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So...
Michelle, there was another one, also on page 22A, where signs that are otherwise omitted. You have, it is on the summary, you just didn't mention it, that's all.
Okay, I'm very sorry.
That's okay.
Because then I am at, maybe you don't...
Yeah, right there, right there, where it says A.
Right, A, which is a maximum of two signs to permit per business. The total sign area for all signs, nonincluding window signs that are otherwise permitted. And that's section 30-61.16. Now, I'm doing, I'll do a better job, actually, without my reading glasses. So then, page 23, is amended, section F.3, right, is amended to clarify method of calculating sign area. So the change to the total area of all signs, nonincluding window signs that are otherwise permitted. So that is clarified, shall not exceed two square feet. So then, the next set of changes you have before you have to do with lighting. The first page of lighting, as you see on the screen, has two changes, with the strikeout of appropriate outdoor lighting shall be provided where necessary for the safety of pedestrians. Outdoor lighting and illuminated signs shall be shielded so that such lighting will not adversely affect abutting property or streets. At the request of the Board, that was struck. And then, if you go to... For A, the A general, sufficient exterior illumination shall be provided to ensure the safety of persons and security of property between the hours of sunset and sunrise. Lighting shall be designed so as to avoid the creation of hazards to pedestrians, vehicles, or nuisances to adjoining property owners or residents. There shall be a preference for lighting that is certified dark sky friendly by the International Dark Sky Association. The following shall apply to all exterior lighting except for photovoltaic solar powered luminaires. And then I'm not going to read them all of everything listed, but there are some strike throughs that include for three, that is not building mounted supplied with electricity from cabling that we struck, and that six, except for security lighting, all lighting for nonresidential uses shall be turned on and note earlier than one hour, and turned off no later than one hour after established public hours. So that was changed. Page two was changed so that the average light level doesn't, is not to exceed one foot candle. That's three illumination levels. And that is it for lighting. The next section, which I'm going to go to, is right below, which is street trees, that the authorization for tree removal changed to the city. And that's down here at 57.12 Street Tree A, removed, was struck, and the portion about Environmental, Asbury Park Environmental Shade Tree Commission was struck, but approval of the city was left there, because then we can be, we can be flexible of who's going to do the approving. And then we can just work it out internally, whether we send something to Environmental Shade Tree Commission or not. And the meeting of the subcommittee thought that was the best way to go about that.
I have to, may I interject, please?
Yes, please.
And this was in line with some questions about the jurisdiction and powers of the Shade Tree Commission? Okay, because that says removal tree, any street tree. Jurisdiction of the Environmental and Shade Tree, the Environmental and Shade Tree Commission is limited by state statute, which we have mirrored in our local ordinance. I'll read it into the record, just so everyone is clear, and if you feel you need to amend that in any way, shape, or form, you can. There's hereby vested in the Shade Tree Commission full and exclusive control over the regulation, planting, and care of shade and ornamental trees and shrubbery now located or which may hereafter be planted in any public highway. And that's very important, it's got to be a public highway, park, or parkway in the City of Asbury Park. It goes on to say some other things, but there are also some exceptions. The jurisdiction of the Environmental Shade Tree Commission does not extend to streets that are county roads or state highways, according to the state statute as well. So just so that the Board is aware of the powers of, and they do not regulate, they do not have the power to regulate trees on a person's property.
Right, so, thank you, Jack. And because of the, yes, the Environmental Shade Tree Commission does have jurisdiction of parks and city streets.
Yes.
So we left it as approval of the city, so that it will remain the Environmental Shade Tree Commission. But that, we have also some flexibility in working with the Environmental Shade Tree Commission.
Yeah, I'll make sure that going forward, all resolutions that involve any tree plantings within the city rights of way, streets, et cetera, will have that condition in it. If not already done so, that it'll be subject to review and approval by the Shade Tree Commission.
But you already do include that.
Yes, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so... I'm sorry, let me just go back, okay.
Go ahead and get your...
So page three, the spacing, what was changed is 12.C.1, that spacing of street trees to follow the existing patterns. So that the language is there to reflect that. And the... So then... On page four, 12.C.5.8.3, over here, changed areas with high foot traffic to all other areas. And then on the same page, C.5.8.5 was changed to remove the reference to natural topsoil that has never been stripped and require removal of subsoil, as we had discussed. So then I'm going to go to fences.
Just a second, Michelle, I think that there was, there were some other ones that were there in 5A3, I believe? 5A3, 5A4, and 5A5. 5A3, where it says zone and district, zone districts?
Yes.
And 5A4, it says in all other areas?
Mm-hmm.
And five, it said subsoil shall be removed. That, which is the one that you did mention.
Yes.
Good.
I'm sorry, Michelle, this is Jen Sauter. I sort of questioned it, because it scrolled past the three right above, a little bit up. Was that the preference? I just want to make sure that that was in there, the preference shall be...
Yes, I'm sorry, I skipped that. Preference shall be given to native, native adept, and nonvasive species, yes, that we discussed that as well.
Thank you, I was just double checking.
Okay, so...
John Moore, and I apologize if I wasn't listening, paying attention, as far as directions. So if we have questions or concerns now, why something wasn't changed, you don't want them now, you want them at the end of all this?
No, no, let's, no, it's easier to say it now.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so on, okay, on page 32E, the minimum distance from a curb, cut, or driveway to the edge of a tree pit shall be one foot. And I believe Jim and I had some concerns about that, that one foot wasn't enough. So what was the rationale to keep it at one foot?
Because we, based on the size of the tree, you can plant a tree, if it's a smaller species tree, it can be within that one foot.
This is Michael Sullivan, if I can just jump in here?
Yeah, jump in, Michael.
Just to, the discussion was that the tree pit is a minimum of five feet in width, so if that starts one foot off, then the closest the tree would be, would be like three to four feet from there, and we thought that that was enough. And if there is a site issue or a physical issue, it can be slid. But we felt that it wasn't to the tree, it was to the edge of the tree pit, which is five feet.
Thank you. One more question, on page 5D2, root size and the... I have a note, just from the last meeting, that somebody made recommendation of three times instead of five times, so I don't know what happened there.
This is Michael Sullivan again. What we're talking about are areas where there are pavement over top of the root zone. So they use specialized soils and that allow for root growth. So because, because the entire root zone is going to be covered, they're using a larger planting median area around the root zone. So, and because it can be, it can be larger, because it's going to be covered by pavement. And because it's covered by pavement, it's more susceptible to not getting air and water, so we want a larger area.
Okay, thank you. And then, one general question, it has nothing to do with this, but I know I'm going to ask it later, so I might as well ask it now. I just want to be clear. This is for the entire city, including the waterfront redevelopment area? Yes or no?
No, because the waterfront redevelopment area has its own standards, and they don't revert that. Anything that's, nothing reverts back to the zoning.
Okay, so, this is, this is good for the entire city, except the waterfront redevelopment area?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question. On 5A5, where it talks about the removal of subsoil, the last paragraph there, it says removal of a depth of one foot or less. Shouldn't that be one foot or more? You're talking about removing, adding topsoil to a depth of approximately two feet. If you only remove a foot of subsoil, you may not have that.
That's a, that's a good point, Jim, that can be changed. The reality is, in Asbury Park, most of the soils you're going to encounter are mostly urban soils, so that can be changed, and I think it's fine. We can change it.
Okay, so we're going to change, subsoil shall be removed to a depth of one foot or more?
I would think that would do it.
Okay. Okay, I'm writing it. Okay. Any more questions? All right, I'm going to go on to fences. So we changed to prohibit, amended, I'm sorry, 3063.2.8 on page seven, to remove, to prohibit fences within the right-of-way. Fences are prohibited from being located within the public right-of-way, which was there and accidentally got struck, and now it's back in. So 60, the next change is on page eight, which is 30-63.2E. We changed, we clarified it. Chain link and solid fencing is prohibited for all street-facing facades excluding alleys unless otherwise permitted by paragraph C above. And that's a clarification. So that, I believe, is it. The other changes in the memo were items that I had yet to talk about, I believe, although... Yes. So Madam Chairman, would you like me to stop here, and we take the public questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Please, so that this, what this is...
I'm sorry, I didn't know we were done with fences, I had a question.
Oh, sure, no, we're not, no, we're certainly not done, but go ahead.
Okay, on page eight, vegetative barriers. Again, this is just my own personal thing. I don't understand, so somebody could plant like a row of trees 100 feet high next to my house, and there's no, there's no height restriction for trees as a fence?
You're right, we had discussed that, I didn't think we, I didn't think we came to a conclusion on it. I thought we were going to keep it as is, because we would then, the zoning officer would have to be policing how tall people's plants get. And I thought that was, we thought that was a little subjective. But I, you know, would like to hear from what, you know, what the other, anyone else, you know, has a thought about that.
That could be fixed by defining what a site triangle is, and what the height of a planting within that site triangle could be.
Would that only apply to, this is Eric Gallo, but wouldn't that only apply to a corner lot, Jim?
Would that only apply to, this is Eric Gallup, but wouldn't that only apply to a corner lot, Jim?
Uh, y- yes, or it would also apply at a driveway cut. If uh, if somebody planted something. Uh, alongside of a curb cut. Where there's a driveway. Uh, I would think that the, the site triangle uh. Uh, requirements would uh also include that type of a situation.
Except property lines are usually inboard of the sidewalk?
However, that's true, but how, uh, many times, people will put the uh. A fence line or a uh hedge of some type, right next to the walkway of a sidewalk. Even though it's on city property. So you have that situation. It applies to uh, plantings, it applies to fences, it applies to retaining walls.
Uh, I, I, I agree, but um, if they're planting it on city property, it's not act, the zoning ordinance wouldn't. Wouldn't control it. Other than to say you shouldn't plant it on city property.
Well, okay, if, uh, you're right, but that happens all the time.
Right, because as, you know, because as a practical matter, a lot of people's lawn area is a city right of way. And we, even though it's a city right of way, you know, we in this city, we don't come and mow it, take care of it, the property owner has to take care of it.
Yes, but if you don't define what the site triangle is and what the height of a planting in that site triangle. Um. How, how are you going to enforce it, except by making the property owner remove it?
Well, I, I thought with John, yeah, yeah, uh, but I, I know, and then that's becomes like a little dicey because. We're saying to a property owner, you know, take the hedge out of this, the city right of way here. And then we're kind of dictating, well, then you have to keep it lawn, or you, like, we're kind of dictating to the property owner. What it has to be and that they have to care for it, even though it's city right of way, that's why I think it becomes.
Well, that's, that's not unusual, Michelle, uh, you require uh, people to maintain the sidewalk within the city right of way. You ma- they maintain the uh, the grass strip within the right of way. So that's not unusual.
Right, but I'm saying that, that I, I, I mean. I, I, I don't want to have to dictate to people, you can't plant this hedge. You know, unless it, it is this, hedge is another landscaping, um. Shall not be li- uh, from the height, shall be exempt, but not be located to conflict with A, so if it's a conflict with the site triangle. Sure, that's a sa- a sa- you know, a safety issue. But I, I, I'm, it can get pretty subjective. Um, for me, me or the zoning officer to say, you know, or, well, to say your hedge now has to be trimmed down to four feet. Or maybe not. I mean, if this is, if that's what everyone would like, we can, we can um say that vegetative barriers are not exempt from height. I mean, my, I, I, you know, the town I live in, which has a law restrictive zoning, does not restrict. Your, your, your hedge size.
But, but what, what, so what happens today, Michelle, when, when we're dealing with site triangles? And we do, I mean, we do it all the time when we're driving up and down the streets of Asbury Park, there are some places. Where you really do have to go into the intersection to be able to see what's going on. So should we be doing something here? That forces people to keep things within, you know, or do we just say? Make it into, you know, that the site, that the site triangle has to be, you know, has to be a safe zone. And that's going to be subjective, is, do we really want to leave it as subjective?
Well, no, that's what this says, if someone has a hedge and it's a safety issue because they can't see, that is covered in B.
Okay.
I thought what was being discussed was because the front yard height. Oh, your front yard fence height can't be any higher than four feet. Then your hedge height can't be any taller than four feet.
But there's a proviso to that pr- pr- uh, provision, Michelle, that says that you uh. If that four foot fence is in the site triangle, which is not defined, what I'm asking is, please define the site triangle. As far as what it is and the height of it, that would resolve the whole issue.
Mr. Henry, this is Donna Miller.
Yeah.
We do have a definition for site triangle in the ordinance, it is defined. And it does specify, under definitions, it's not being considered tonight. But it is in the definition section of the ordinance, and it does specify that nothing shall grow within the site triangle. To obscure.
And what's?
Visibility, so again.
What do you define as a slight triangle? I don't see the definition, Donna.
I- in the ordinance?
Yeah.
It's not in the section we're looking at tonight, it's in the main ordinance under definitions.
Okay.
Well then, so then we have to remem- we have to remember to take a look back there, Jim. Um, when we're, when we're go- reviewing those.
I would, I would just think it would be so much easier to include it in this discussion that we're, we're having right now. And maybe, maybe it should be in both places.
But so, so Jim, this is Michael Sullivan, uh, it, as Donna said, it is in the definition section, and it basically says that you cannot obscure, you can't place any object to obscure a site triangle. I think we don't want to get into um, the um, actual height of whatever that obstruction is, because it's really an engineering consideration, if there is a, a visibility thing, it can vary. Um, but it is, it's mentioned here in, in the context of fences, which I think covers this. Uh, and then it's also mentioned in the general definition, so I think, I think you have enough. To take care of any violations right now at this point.
Okay.
And I think, I think the other point I'd like to make is that. You know, th- this ordinance is really intended to regulate development and not one and two family. Folks doing stuff on their properties, that's, that would be more of a property maintenance ordinance, uh, the way I see it, and I'll defer to Jack on, on what he thinks about that, if he thinks anything differently, but um. That's really where we're headed with the, the, the site triangles at this point.
Um, my, my one concern to follow up to Jim is, is actually, and to Barbara's comment, is actually about corner lots specifically.
Mm hmm.
It's those lots at intersections where I can think of many on my block where they have lovely. Uh, privet hedges all around their properties, and there's nothing that you can do to see. The cars approaching, fortunately, our roads are wide enough and you can inch out until you do see something, so. I'm curious if, you know, what the temperature is on, can we? Restrict planting in the five feet or the ten feet at the corner, no planting. You know, just to leave that open.
If I may, it's, if you probably look back in the historical regulations in the city of Asbury Park. I'd be willing to bet lunch that you'd find a provision somewhere that says you can't have. Those obstructions within the corner lots and site triangles or some reference to it, the problem. With these sort of things, oh, and other similar items is the enforcement issue. Uh, over the years, people will tend to plant their hedges, maybe when they first built a house in nineteen thirty or forty or fifty or whatever it was. You might have had that where there wasn't an issue, and then over time, these things, these things happen, and then it's a matter of enforcement. Uh, you know, and, and you can write the law any way you like, it's always gonna be, come down to enforcement. So, I mean, it's really up to you.
And again, so what I want to say is then, do we want the board and do we want the governing body? Or then to make a regulation where we have to go to property owners and say, you have to trim your hedges, you have to remove landscaping. And.
Well, you tell property owners they must maintain their grass, and it's a different context, obviously, but uh, it's the same principle.
Well, that's the maintenance code, that is the maintenance code, and that's, but, um.
But, but within, within the maintenance code, is there anything about the height of hedges?
Well, the, again, but taking a step back, the site triangle thing I think is taken care of here, again. What, what we had in the old ordinance was something that was unenforceable because the old ordinance referenced a county manual. That doesn't exist anymore. So this new section A. Is supposed to, is takes, and the new definition takes care of that, that we have teeth. For site triangles, but what I'm understanding, I was, I thought the mayor meant for B. Is that vegetative barriers are exempt from the general height for a front yard fence. Or a backyard fence, meaning if you plant the arborvitae in the back and they take off. And they grow to eight feet tall. Then that's now a zoning violation, because our maximum he- he- fence height in the rear is six. I thought that's what the mayor wanted us to change.
But that's, it's more, that's part of it, and but just again. I, I definitely agree with everybody about the sightline, if that's covered someplace else, I'm fine with that, uh, it's being enforced, I agree with Jim. A lot of things need to be enforced, and that's something, I guess this city's got to pick up its ass on. But my concern, it's, it's just not this one, but it's just an example I'll throw out there, like, right now I have a view of the lake. I live on the lake, no, but I have a view of the lake, so the new, I get a new neighbor, he decides to plant twenty foot trees. Because they, the hedges or trees aren't considered fences, but to me a hedge is a fence. I mean, so they could plant something where I'd lose the view of the lake, so what, what prevents that?
Well, you're right, this would exempt it. For, you know, if their fence, if their fence, if their hedge. You know, grew, grew tall. Now, that trees, again, gets very subjective, because trees, you can argue, you can see through trees, like, I don't see. Like how we would have a legal lan- um, legal leg to stand on with a tree. But a hedge, if everyone wants to limit. You know, hedges that they must be the same as a fence. We could do that, it's just um. It's not gonna be very popular.
Oh, yeah, if I could build on Michelle's point, I think, um, I think you're right, Michelle, that it's, it's difficult to plant very tall trees very close together. So I don't think you're ever gonna, naturally gonna have a, a, a barrier of trees, if you will, and, and hedges, I think in all practicality. It's tough for them to grow above eight or ten feet, I would think, um, so. I, I personally, I don't think we should change what's written, but that's just my two cents.
It, it's more again, and uh, I'll just use it for an example, when we were doing the. Triangle, they were gonna plant these trees along Asbury Avenue, and I questioned like. How far apart are they gonna be and how high are they gonna grow, and the answer was like, well, they'll start off like apart, then they'll grow together and they can go up to like twenty feet, and I'm like. I wasn't a fan of that, I mean, so, again, it's like building a wall that's twenty feet high.
It, it, I, I don't know, that it, it sounds to me, uh, that the, just, mainly, once again, my two cents. Is that, that, you know, I get the whole tree thing, but when you're talking about hedges or things that can grow higher, why, and a hedge could be a fence. I think that, I, you know, I'm, I, I kind of agree with John on this one, where, where, you know, a fence and a hedge, they're really pretty much the same thing. As where, as far as height is concerned, I would think.
This is Jen Souter, uh, I agree, uh, too, I know I said the same thing at the last meeting, um. It, it, when it's a, when it's a hedge, because um, I think what Michelle said just before that, before John spoke, that if. The language was the same for fence or hedge, then it's just, you know, applies across the board, this is. The maximum that that fence slash hedge can be, um, because then you don't run into it, and there are properties in town where it's not the case, and you have. Extremely dense plantings that take up the whole corner, um, and you, you cannot see through any of it, and it is, they're very tall, and that exists for sure. So I would imagine it would probably come, might happen again.
Right, and I think we, it's taken care of for the site triangle, like in what I um, was envisioning more, you know, what, and what John brought up, is more about. Like he said, like. Someone, rather than putting a fence up, up plants arborvitae, which can get big.
Right.
Privet can get big. And then they exceed the fu- fence height, so I just need to know from everyone, we can, we can, if everyone's cool with it. We won't exempt vegetar- veget- vegetative barriers. Yeah, you know, and then if your front yard privet gets to be higher than four feet, then you can get a zoning violation. Or you have to cut it back.
By. What, what is, what is the general purpose of? The, the hedge, and that, that's what we really need to look at. It's generally to provide privacy to the, the homeowner, but by the same token, that privacy can't be at the expense of the motorists who like. Can't see what's coming from the side street.
But that's taken care of with the site triangle.
Right.
That's what, what I'm talking about is, forget the site triangle, that's taken care of. It's not about your, it, it's not about the danger with the car, this is about. Think about John's analogy more about the backyard, my, or he has a view of the lake. Someone behind him, new owner comes in and decides to plant arborvitae, or privet. Which won't be tall at its first planting, let's say, and then in ten years. It exceeds the fence height, and he no longer has a view of the lake, it's the equivalent, let's say it grows to be eight feet. Then. Then he believes it's worth, you know, our fence height's limited at six, now it, it's. It exceeds the fence regulation, and it's acting like a fence, and so it should be regulated like a fence.
I would think so.
Yes. I would think so.
I would, I would like to see that.
How, is, however, is it only the front yard fence that we're focusing on?
No, no, this is not front yard.
No, they're not in the backyard, Eric.
Yes.
So if you have privet in your backyard that's over the six foot height. You would require a person to.
To trim it back to six foot.
But. I'm not su- like.
Is this a zoning issue? That, or is it, or is it a property maintenance issue?
I, I think that, I think that if you don't specify the directionality, for example, if I. If I wanted to plant a row of privet in my backyard. To give myself more privacy from my back, my direct back neighbor, whoever that may be. I would expect that I can grow it taller than six feet.
Well, the, that's right, so that's how it is now, and that's how this exemption works, but what we're saying are. Is that, no, we would remove that, and you would no longer have that expectation or that right.
Correct, so, so what I'm saying to the board is that. The reason we, I think we have these concerns is because of, like, you want to be able to control the environment on your, i- if you're in an interior lot. Along your side lot lines and your rear lot line, what if somebody has, somebody builds a building next to you, that's. Eight stories, and now you, all, all, you have people looking down, and the only privacy you have is the six foot privacy fence and the privet hedge that you've planted. And that can happen. And, but, but if I can understand how you might want to regulate the front yard. Not having something above the four foot height. I think that your back and rear, your, your back and side yards might be a different regulation than just what's in the front.
Except if you're in a corner lot.
Exa- and, and a corner lot, thank you, thank you, Jim.
Corner law is taken care of with the sightline.
And, and to that point, yes, the corner lot is taken care of with the sightline, the site.
It's taking care of all long, that's, I might be misunderstanding it, it's taking care of. I, I don't want to confuse matters, but if, if part of, my understanding was, part of the restriction on corner lots is. And I could be totally wrong, that it's um, like the, the blocking, more to John's point, I think also, like the blocking of um. Uh, like if you have a ten foot wall of arborvitae, for example, and you can no longer see, it, it feels like. It it feels like a wall when you walk down the street. Is that okay? And if you had a ten foot fence, we couldn't have a ten foot fence, if it's only for the sightline for traffic, then I agree that it doesn't need to be changed, but if there's any other reason, for example, we don't wanna have a ten foot wall of fence slash hedge. Along a street.
Along the street line, right, and I think that that's the, I think the primary concern is along the street line. Side property lines and rear property lines, those hedges may serve functional purposes to a great number of people who who for whatever reasons, maybe they're like next to a large multifamily building and.
Dust or an industrial.
Or an industrial use, or a vacant lot, or neighbors they don't particularly wanna look at. But in the rear and side yards, not behind, behind the building line and in this rear and side yards. I I I feel like the concern should be about front yards and street facing areas. And less so about what happens in somebody's back and rear and side yards. A- a- and cor- and corners to to Jen Souter's point. Which is addressed by the site triangle and the fact that they're limited to four feet, is that correct, Michelle?
Yeah.
Yes. And there's a great number of mat- plant materials that mature at much greater heights than six feet. You could plant a row of birches quite close together and they would get to be twenty, thirty feet tall or crepe myrtles or.
Crepe myrtles a good, is a better, is a good example.
They they get planted very close together, can be planted very close together. So I would see, uh, my 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 proposal or suggestion is that we try to deal with the front yard and street facing aspect of it to prevent what we, what would be obstructionary. But not prevent what does allow some landowners to provide their interior spaces with a greater degree of privacy. Through vegetative barriers.
Is everyone in agreement? Or not in agreement?
I certainly agree with what Eric is uh, is talking about. I mean, you can do this with a half a dozen uh, uh, forsythia bushes. I mean, they can grow to what, ten, twelve, fifteen feet? And they get pretty thick, I mean.
Right, that's another hedge type, privet, forsythia.
Yep, yep, a- absolutely, it could be a variety, privet, forsythia, you know, like those are all, you could make large hedges with them, but I also think hedges are to- part of a landscape vernacular that is generally taller than six feet. In backyards. I I'm, I'm almost, I'm only five foot six and I could claim that I'm almost six feet.
I don't know, maybe, I mean, should we? Check with the uh, with the board to see which way they they feel that we should go with this?
Sure, so you can move on, yeah.
Right.
I also think enforcement in the rear and side yards would be incredibly difficult.
That that's, you see, that's, that's what my concern was, like, as you're, as you're speaking, Eric. And I understand that because in Asbury, we do have various, you live in neighborhoods. Where you have, you don't know what's, you know, there are various people in and buildings next to you that could be re- fully residential, like John was mentioning. Versus, you know, commercial buildings could be right next to you and multi-story buildings could be right next to you. And your backyard and your side yards are kind of like your haven. Um, so I get that and enforcing it, and I was also thinking through to say to the enforcement level. That would be tough. Like you said, to to actually enforce that. Um.
My suggestion would be that we try to limit the scope of what we're, what we're trying to affect here to the area in front of the building, between the front property line and the building line. And on corner lots. That would be my suggestion and I I welcome. Discussion.
I I agree with that, Eric, I I my, this is Jen again, Jen Souter, the, because I I just wanna be clear, when we read the language about sightlines and then it says vegetative barriers, hedges and other landscaping shall be exempt from height. Um, so as not to conflict with paragraph A above. But that, the paragraph A above again says within the site triangle of any street intersection, but if you have a long property. That extends on that corner for a long time. You don't have to worry about that, and I'm, that's what I'm wondering, is that, that's the part, if you have a long corner and there's a section of your yard that does not impact the site triangle, you can build a twenty foot hedge, you can have a twenty foot hedge. And that's what I think is problematic.
But I, aren't, aren't corner lots treated separately, Michelle?
With the fence, right, well, fence meaning if you're a corner lot, yours, but we had amended it so that you can a- at the building fence off taller for more privacy and that takes care of the sightline. But what Jen is saying is how we interpret the site triangle, are we gonna interpret it as just the first five feet into the property or ten and then someone could hedge up the rear part of the property, like take a look at what you have on the screen. The drawing with dwelling and those lines. Jen is concerned with the ambiguity of where the site triangle ends.
Right.
And that basically at the ba- portion, that's the back of the dwelling. That someone could then put privet or the forsythia. And then you have the barrier up against, the taller than the four feet up against the sidewalk, that's what her concern is.
Yeah, and and I think my suggestion would allay that by addressing only the area between the building setback line and the front property line for the restriction in height. To match the, and and that height should match the allowed fence along that property line.
Oh, I thought Jen wanted to be more restrictive.
Correct.
Well, I'm, I'm.
Me and Jen would like, but I don't wanna put words in Jen's mouth, Jen, go ahead.
I, you're correct, I'm saying that if it's only probably a few, it's probably again, I don't wanna make it like the exception making the rule, but I feel like there are properties in Asbury Park that have the opportunity. Where you can have the condition of a street facing corner property, having ha- as as tall as you want of a hedge that you cannot see through at all. You know, for a very, for the whole length of the property, and so as you walk along it. You have a really high, you know, wall that's made of plants that blocks every, everything, I mean. So it's, it's a subjective thing, and I realize it's come up before, whether or not that's desirable or okay. You know, it's, I just, I I feel like if the goal is to provide, if it is that people can have privacy, whether it's a corner lot or not, then it's then to me it doesn't matter, but if we're trying to create anything where you're not having that wall feeling as you walk along the street. Then that's my concern, like I, I'm just, I just feel like a thing of arborvitae that's ten feet tall feels to me just does all the same things, restricts all views, you can't um, you know, no air moves through, it's just, it's the same as a wall, same as a fence to me.
I I agree with you, Jen, and I do think that for corner lots, as you're saying, it should be more restrictive. For interior lots, I think it should only deal with the area between the building line and the front lot line. The front property.
I agree with what you just said and you said.
I think that 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 sounds fair. And then we're then, then the the issue with the side lots and the back lot. Um, you go, if if some, it's kind of like people's haven. That that, you know, if you, if they can't, they don't need, they don't want to see what the buildings there are around them and we have a lot of that here.
Yeah, and so, Michelle, if you could just mouse, um, put your mouse over the building setback line.
This is the front building setback line, this is the rear setback setback building line.
So for an, so what I, so what I'm proposing is that for an interior lot, there is no restriction on vegetative barrier height. In the side yard and rear yards. After the building setback line. There is, there should be something that restricts it to match your allowed fence height between the building line and the front property line.
Okay.
Right. I think that that's, uh, now, now, let's say if somebody has a situation and it's brought to who, who would it be brought to, the city? And they say, okay, I'm, I'm requesting that I want to have, you know, I wanna change um, that to have to, you know, to be instead of being six feet, it's seven feet or eight feet. Because of whatever reason, of because of who they're next to, they can come to the zoning board?
It would then be a variance, yeah.
Okay, will be variance to them, they can come.
If the regulation is within the development regulations and the uh, zoning ordinance, yeah.
No, I thi- I think that, I, I mean, we can certainly take, we can certainly take a vote. To see if we uh. If, I, it depends on what every, what everybody feels. Cause what what was laid out by by Eric, I think was uh, was it, was a good way to go.
It it's more and uh, I I agree, and I still have the concern Jen has, I think both Eric and Jen make good uh, not analogies, but good presentations, so I I I could go for that and tomorrow I'll call zoning tomorrow and give them two that were done, exactly like Jen said, a long row, they're over twelve feet long. And they were just done within the last year and nobody's seen them except me, I guess, so I'll tell you what street to drive down tomorrow.
Yeah, and you know, corner lots are in cities, I think, tend to well, they always do have more restrictive regulations. And I think that the the double frontages, you know, are something that we have to consider and keeping the sense of openness at those corners is really you know, goes beyond safety, it's about maintaining the historical view sheds that we've had. You know, ca- you know, being able to see who's approaching on an opposite corner if you're walking late at night, we have very wide streets that aren't particularly well lit, um, so being able to see beyond that as a pedestrian is important.
Yeah, more again, uh, again, I just think a hedge is a fence, whatever, that's neither here nor there, but I like the caveat if somebody needed to have something that we're saying you can't have, they can go get a variance, so there is a, there is a mechanism.
Yep. Is anybody, um, are we okay with that?
Uh, we, so that does allow the planting of trees. In that front zone, correct, Michelle?
Yes, but I I really don't think you would get the example, like you said, with the birches. Of a birch that would, we would consider a tree and not a hedge. I I really think, like we said, it's the privet, arborvitae, forsythia, maybe crepe myrtle, I didn't really. I mean, you know.
Crepe myrtle, you can certainly grow as a hedge.
You can, but I haven't, I've seen, you're right, I have seen it. But a little bit, some into a cluster.
It's, it's meant to be a tree.
Right.
All right, so um, so are we okay with that? Yes. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we will request that. To be modified.
Yes.
Okay. Who, does uh, anybody else on the board have any other concerns about what Michelle reviewed today?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of more questions. Uh, I realize we've gone over this uh, in the past, but um. Going back to the sign and uh, the the lighting and stuff, I have a bunch of questions for clarification. Um. On on page one of the uh, the side ordinance, Michelle, um. There is a reference to uh, machinery and equipment signs, what does that mean? It's in the paragraph about halfway down where it says signs, it's the last line in there.
Under sign.
That the, shall, shall not be considered signs, subject to the regulation of the chapter machinery or equipment signs. Meaning signage on a piece of construction. Uh, uh, equipment, like. Like uh, you would see uh, uh, when the road is getting milled and repaved that the vehicle doing that. Would have, you know, have a sign, basically like on the, on the vehicle.
Okay, so you're talking about the um, the contractor's name on his uh, front end loader or whatever, whatever piece of equipment he's using, right? Yeah. Okay, uh, page two. Um, first paragraph. Next to the last line in the uh, uh, third line down where it refers to flags, what's your definition of a flag?
On page two?
Page two. Under banner.
Under banner, right.
First down one line.
Flags shall not be considered banners.
Correct, what's your definition?
We have a definition in.
In the definition section?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not, okay. And just for clarification, for my own edification, a blade sign is a sign that is uh, the front face is parallel to the building, my rear face is also parallel to the building.
It's perpendicular.
I'm sorry?
It's perpendicular, sawing blade, a type of projecting sign that is mounted perpendicular to the building facade.
Okay, I'm sorry, I um, I must have misinterpreted that. Okay. Yeah, okay, uh, go down, go down to the third, uh, I'm I'm sorry, bu- building sign on the wall.
Yes.
Okay, that I, I mixed the two of them up, okay, forget that question. Um, on page two where it says sign height. Uh, are you thinking of a sign that goes from the ground? Or is it one that is mounted above the ground? Uh, just to collect, to correct me on what my, what the height might be.
The vertical distance measured from the ground level nearest the base of the sign to the highest point on the sign.
You're in, you're anticipating a sign that runs from the ground? Not one that is mounted four foot off the ground? Or any other distance?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, the definition says from the ground to the top of the sign. Right, that's the sign height.
Right, the, from the ground level nearest the base of the sign to the highest point of the sign. Right, meaning.
Right.
That's not the height, this is the height.
The way I read this is it says that it's a vertical distance measured from the ground level to the top of the sign. Right?
Right. Near, no, it's measured from the ground level nearest the base of the sign, the base.
Okay.
To the highest point.
Okay, so if we have a sign that is mounted on two legs. And the bottom of the sign starts four foot up from the ground, is that where the does it start from the ground or does it start from four foot above the ground? That makes a difference in the area.
The dis- vertical distance measured from ground level, ground level nearest the base side, to me, it's where the pole begins.
Said, it means what, say it again?
It's where, so if it's a pole mounted sign as you're suggesting or has feet. It begins at the ground level, it begins where the feet begins, because it's from the ground level nearest the base of the sign.
I just asked for clarification, Michelle, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you at all.
No, I'm not, I'm saying I believe it begins at the feet.
Okay, that that includes the the mounting brackets or whatever you wanna call them.
Yeah, whatever.
Okay, okay, that's all. Um. Page four. Where it says, sign temporary. Um. Just trying to get your interpretation of it, I. I, I real- I realize that it says there that, um, anything less than sixty days is a temporary sign. Corrected?
Right.
Okay, does that include a, uh, a sign such as, uh, a campaign sign? Or a sign that somebody put out to, uh, vote for Joe Blow?
I'm gonna defer to Michael and Sullivan, but I believe so. Because now, remember, we can't have different categories of messaging and signage. So yes, it would be sixty days for whether it's any sign you put on your lawn, whether it says vote for Joe Blow, or it says I love donuts. It would just, it would be this, or if it's a sign that says yards, you know, sidewalk sale or grand opening or.
Here's, here's my, 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 here's my real question is, is there any way that we can regulate, uh, the removal of those, uh, campaign signs after an election?
With this, yes, Kurt, yes, I believe so, because again, this ordinance treats all signage the same, whether it's political speech or commercial speech. And Michael Sullivan, correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct.
Okay.
Could, could you add a, uh, a sentence in there dealing with those type of signs that gives you X number of days for removal?
Not, because again, or it's have to, no, cause, um, well, we can, again, single out one type of sign, it would have to be all temporary signage. And I think it says what it needs to say, a sign with an intended use of sixty days or less, that's the definition. Then later on, you know, if someone has the sign up for more than sixty days and the, um, approval they received was for temporary, the zoning officer can say, take it down or you get, and get a violation.
Okay. Uh, on page eight. Um, the last paragraph, paragraph F at the bottom of the page, um, is, is this just a, uh, an attempt to, uh, make it uh, more palatable for, uh, people walking and/or cars, uh, making it safer? Is that the purpose of this?
Well, it's, it's under the purpose and intent, and yes, it's like a preamble to why we have this sign ordinance and, and its intent.
Okay.
But mo- you know, the vi- when we use the word lessen the visual clutter, it's both a safety and an aesthetic.
Okay, then on next page Q. How about adding, uh, just another word there? Uh, we're talking about, uh, height, illumination, brightness, and location as well.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Also on page nine, uh, T, paragraph T.
Mm-hmm.
At the end, it says and. How about moving that down to, uh, paragraph U?
Yeah.
Just as a matter of format.
Yes.
What was it, what was that?
So after line T has an and.
Oh, right. Gotcha.
Move it down to the next paragraph. Okay, you went over, uh, paragraph K on page ten.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on, uh, page eleven, you, you have knocked out paragraph Y.
Mm-hmm.
On page twelve, make Z Y and A A Z.
Right.
Just, okay?
Yes.
Um, or, uh, page twelve. Let me just see. I'm, I'm sorry, thirteen. You have in paragraph C one C, a comment in parentheses where available, and, uh, on paragraph E, if known. Um, in today's world, uh, seems to me everybody has a cell phone and there'd be no excuse why they couldn't provide a phone number in either, in either, uh, paragraph, where you're talking about the application.
Mm-hmm.
So I would, if it were me, I would strike out, um, where available and if known, and just require them to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, page sixteen.
Wait, I'm, I'm sorry.
Um, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm talking about, uh, paragraph thirty dash sixty-one point nine. Um, I'm a little confused as to, uh, what this means. Are you talking about, you're basically saying you can't, uh, the city can't regulate the content? Is, basically that what, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, page seventeen. Uh, paragraph A seven, the same issue with the and. Um, that should drop down to, uh, paragraph nine. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
At page, page twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, paragraph L four. Something doesn't read right, just, uh, just the wording of it seems to be a little awkward. Shall be little ones, sandwich board sign per business property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, twenty, thirty. Uh, in paragraph A, uh, sixty-one point seventeen, should we also add a, a comment concerning neighboring properties? You're talking about pedestrian and motor vehicle traffic. Uh, how about, uh, adjacent properties?
Okay, yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
Wait, let me just write it down. Okay.
Uh, on page, uh, twenty-four, you make reference to nits.
Mm-hmm.
How are they, how are they measured? I mean, actually measured, how? Is there a meter for it?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. It's new to me, so I'm, I'm old school. Page twenty-five. Uh, page twenty-five. This, when I read this, paragraph D, where it talked about the, uh, thirty day, uh, period, it seemed to be a conflict with another provision in the side ordinance where, where I think you talked about a, a ten day, uh, period. And I, I wonder which one was controlling.
Let, let me.
Or, or is it up to the zoning officer to make that, make that determination?
Let me just read it for one sec. I say we strike that thirty day period.
Say it again, Michelle.
Say we strike thirty day, because we'll leave at the discretion of the zoning officer.
Okay.
Both ways, you gotta strike one or the other.
Which, what's the other?
The other is leaving it in, describing, because it's, you're saying it's thirty days, but the sentence before it says it's in the opinion of the length of time as the zoning officer designates. So you gotta have it one way or the other, so you're right. Strike one or the other.
Because I talked about the safety, if any sign became unsafe.
Right.
And the other is just if, yeah, so we'll strike the thirty day.
Uh, in, in dealing with the, uh, the next, uh, chapter with a, uh, uh, lighting, is there any way that we can, uh, do something about existing lighting that doesn't conform? It's, it's not in here, but is there a mech- mechanism?
So, so Mike, Jim, this is Michael Sullivan. I think that if there are existing, uh, lights that don't conform, I think that they're grandfathered, um, unless there's some sort of public safety aspect of it that, uh, is a problem. Um, but I do think that if there are not conforming, um, lights or lighting characteristics that are extant in, uh, an application that comes before the planning board, then you have the, it's fair game for you to request them to comply.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Um, okay. You've already addressed the next three or four items I had. Uh, on page five, five D four.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, five D four. Um, I'm, I'm confused as to what you have in mind there. Uh, it looks like you're putting, uh, some perforated drainage pipes at the bottom of the, uh, uh, tree pits and are they, they run parallel to the sidewalk or they? What, what do you envision?
Michael's going.
Yes, the, you know, uh, Jim, this is Michael Sullivan. Yes, the, um, we're not specifying exactly how they're laid, but they, but they would be laid horizontally to ensure drainage, um, through the, through the pit, um, and, um, uh, but we're not specifying, um, uh, anything with respect to spacing or orientation, because it's a site, it's a case by case basis.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you. Um, and in the, uh, the, uh, section on signs, I'm sorry, on, uh, fences, uh, we never mentioned retaining walls that are in the city right of way.
Well, they, they're not permitted.
Yeah, how about the ones that exist? Are they permitted to stay until the city needs them to be removed?
No, I mean, the, our current fence ordinance prohibits it. So if you, you know, call Mark or me or email one of us, we'll check it out.
Okay. Okay. Uh, that, those are the only questions I have. Uh, and thank you for your, uh, input.
No, thank you.
All right, does anybody else from the planning board have any other, uh, questions? Or concerns? Because we're going to be going to the, uh, the public questions right after this. So if you have anything, let us know. Nothing? All right, uh, we need to open up, uh, open up questions on what was presented today, um, to the public, I know, I'm sorry. Uh, I have to say that it is not limited to today, because when we had our last meeting in October, we did not have the opportunity to do have, to do public questions. So, um, whatever was discussed on that day and today are open for questions. Okay, um, AP TV, I see one, uh, hand up. Uh, and, uh, the last number is three, five, zero. You'd open, if you'd, uh, unmute them, please?
Yeah, Ernest McNally, four hundred D L A Drive, apartment five D, Asbury Park, Jersey, Sandtender. Uh, I'd like to bring your attention of all the hours of, um, revisions and reviews and changes that it's difficult for the public, uh, to kind of remember hours and hours and weeks and weeks ago of proposals about signs and this and hedges, when the public really were left for hours, it seems like days without a comment. You know, it should really be, when you're talking about signs, let the public comment. When you're talking about trees and shrubbery, let the public comment. Instead of stockpiling it for three months where no one can remember everything. I'd like to bring your attention to Johnny Mac's, uh, uh, bar and whatever it's called, House of Spirits. Relative to signs, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't signage on a, a retail twenty percent maximum of, uh, frontage?
No.
It's unlimited. In other words, you can do like what John McGillan does to the front of that bar, you could do it anywhere on Cookman Avenue.
No, it's.
Put old stop signs, one-way signs, uh, bathroom for men and women. If you could put all that up with no restriction. And in addition, for a year, they had a sign up there, hashtag F U C K M I G N O L I. And your office and your code and your zoning and code enforcement would not, no, I'm gonna say what I want to say.
No, Barbara, if you have something to say and he won't stop, we'll mute him. Say what you have to say and then we'll mute you.
Yeah, on my time, let's take in my time.
Yes, either let Barbara speak or I'll mute you and then we'll get you back on again.
You should go back to Brick where you live.
You know something? You keep that up and you're out of.
And what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do, Jack, threatening people?
Please mute Mr. McNally.
Mute him, please.
Please mute Mr. McNally.
Okay. Barbara, if you want to continue, please do so.
I do, I, I wanted to, uh, ask Mr. McNally to allow Michelle to actually answer the question as opposed to continuing on. That was my, that was what I wanted to say.
Right.
I'm fine with, um, Michelle, if you would answer Mr. McNally's question as he was asking what the percentage that could or could not be covered, we should answer that.
Right. It's forty percent is what the zoning ordinance has now. Um, various signage that he mentioned is no longer on that property. And it's for, it's forty percent.
Okay, can we, um, I would like to allow Mr. McNally to come back in if he has any other questions that are specific to what was discussed, that'd be great. But if, if we continue with continuous, uh, um, examples of what happened at some point in time, uh, I'd rather just go, let's, let's move forward. So, Ernest, Mr. McNally, do you have any other questions besides what you saw in Jenny Mac's?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
At, uh, at Third and Pine, uh, it's a three-corner, uh, property with an alley on the north side, a street on the east side, and another street on the south side. The only side there isn't a corner is on the, uh, is on the west side of the property. Now, it's got a six-foot solid fence on a retaining wall on a corner where it's very difficult for people walking by to see cars coming out of the alley or a car wanting to go into the alley. And I'd like to. And I'd like to know, I can't seem to find any paperwork since Ms. Alonso said that no retaining walls. Why there's a retaining wall there and why there's a solid six-foot fence on three sides that blocks the view of pedestrians, students walk by there, cars, et cetera. Now, I was told that it's a property that belongs to a city official who somehow had an ordinance change. And I opened it and I can't find it except for the fact that the past city manager did something where he granted it a variance somehow in a strange kind of meeting without the public available. So I'd like to say, you said that you go out and check properties. I'd like you to go out and check Third and Pine and explain why that six-foot solid fence goes around the alley, the corner, and wraps around a lot of the property, and there's a retaining wall.
Because that applicant received an approval from a board.
From what board?
With notice of the planning board. And there was a resolution on file. I believe you have opened that resolution, you have received that resolution.
No, I haven't.
And approved wall and fence done in a legal manner.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
I need everybody to be... I need both Michelle and Mr. McNally to be muted for a second, please.
Mute me?
Yes, please. Because I don't want to be interrupted, not by you necessarily, Michelle. But the scope of this hearing, what we are doing is we are reviewing master plan recommended ordinances and amendments thereto. We're not here to hear about specific instances about various properties throughout the city that may or may not conform to the zoning ordinance. There's other places for that, but that's not the scope of this hearing. This is purely a legislative hearing to decide what recommendations the board is going to make back to the governing body regarding proposed amendments to the zoning ordinances. Not to talk about specific properties, not to talk about specific applications before boards, but specifically to talk about what the content is of the proposed ordinances and whether or not we should make recommendations that they stay the way they are or we have other recommendations. Comments there, that's where the comments should be deemed relevant and stay within relevancy of what we're doing. And if we're going to... We're not just going to have a general session about various zoning violations about the city. That's not what we're here for. That's beyond the scope of what we're doing. Totally irrelevant to what we're doing.
All right. Can we proceed? If we can unmute, please, Mr. McNally, so that if there are any questions that have to do with what was presented and not specific examples on different properties, please ask your question.
Okay. Am I allowed to ask about a city park, a sign?
No.
No.
No. Okay, okay, okay. I don't think there's too much I can ask. So I'm not allowed to talk?
Actually, Mr. McNally, we have about 82 pages of testimony that we went through. So there are a lot of things. If you have no further questions, we can move on to the next member of the panel.
Okay. Well, I did have a question. Did you say that political signs have a sunrise and sunset?
Temporary signs have a sunrise and a sunset.
Of which political lawn signs are in that category?
Yes.
And does that include on city property and parks?
It's... I'm not sure if I can answer it.
Well, I would hope it's specific in the plan that you're reading from.
I think that it's a pointed question.
Oh, I can't ask a pointed... Okay. All right. Well, since there aren't too many questions I can ask, then I'll just bid you all a good night.
All right. Do we have anyone else out? I don't see any other hands raised. I see another hand raised that just came up. Can you please unmute the city historian?
Hey, I have to click a few things here. Does this work?
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, it does. Okay. First time I'm using my laptop to do this. Greetings, everyone. How are you?
Hello.
Good. All right. I have a bunch of...
For the record, please, I know who you are, but for the record...
Yeah, Werner Baumgartner, 402 Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park, appearing as a city historian.
Okay.
Just going to pull out my notes here from the October 5th meeting first.
Go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. I think the first thing we discussed on that day was fences. So I'll combine today's discussion and October 5th discussion regarding the fence ordinance. Okay. All right. First thing that strikes me is the order in which these paragraphs are organized in the fence ordinance that's being proposed. I understand that the format was kept from the existing format. My question is, do you really feel that this order of paragraphs is a good way to present this ordinance in its entirety? Or perhaps it would be better to rearrange the order of the paragraphs?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So would you believe that a homeowner or somebody picking up this ordinance, reading this very first paragraph, types of fences permitted? You don't believe that that might be a bit misleading if he didn't delve deeper into the subsequent paragraphs? Types of fences permitted. Here's a graphic of all types of fences permitted. Assuming a novice homeowner picks this up and reads just that part and says, oh, look, these are all the fences. They're permitted. I could put any of these up anywhere.
All right. Do you want it somewhere else? You want it at the end?
I'm going to suggest that. I'm asking questions right now, obviously.
Well, no, it has to be, right. It has to be a question about something that was presented. Now, that... And then I believe that what you're asking is something is more of an interpretation of...
Yeah.
What you feel. I mean, it's...
Not what I feel. It's a logical conclusion based on the evidence presented. Okay. Let me pull up the...
Certainly during the comments section, if you have a recommendation, you should make it.
Absolutely. Absolutely, I will. I'm trying to stay within the boundaries of asking questions to elicit information.
I'm with you. I'm following you.
All right. Thank you. You know, I know Barbara sometimes says, you know, get to the point. Where are you going with this? And then I start talking and then you say, I'm sorry, you can't talk now. You have to ask questions. Okay. All right. We're good. We're all good. Okay. I'm trying to pull up my copy of this. All right. Okay. Is there some reason why throughout the fence ordinance, fences, retaining walls, and vegetative barriers cannot be consistently referenced throughout all the appearances?
I'm sorry. I don't know what you mean, that it's not consistent.
Because in some references, it just says fences. In other references, it just says fences and walls. And in other places, it says vegetative barriers. Wouldn't it make more sense to always refer to all three if these ordinances are in fact applying to all three?
Yes.
Or to have a paragraph, a preceding preamble that says, for the purposes of this ordinance, fences, walls, and vegetative barriers shall all be considered the same thing? Something along those lines.
This is... I think that that could be clarified to just say fence because the definition of fence includes walls.
Oh, in the definitions, in the depth of the definitions somewhere.
Yep.
And the vegetative hedge we discussed earlier, so...
Well, barrier is the exact wording, and that's more accurate, actually. Vegetative bar...
Right. But, right.
Okay. All right. Great. Did you consider, in looking at this as a committee, did you consider prohibiting front yard fences in any way, shape, or form in their entirety?
I will say it comes up, it came up, and I don't think it's very popular to prohibit front yard fencing.
Okay. What about in existing historic areas where the predominant architectural style of the streetscape omits fences entirely? Such as, I would give an example, 8th Avenue, for example.
No.
You wouldn't think that prohibiting front yard fences there would be a good idea?
We would have to call a specific street out.
Exactly. Or a specific zone. Okay. Just wondering if you thought about that.
Yeah. I mean, we had this discussion about front yard fences and I believe that the committee, the zoning board, and the government, I mean, planning board and the governing body would like to give residents the option of being able to have a front yard fence.
Even in areas where there are currently none? And that lends to the historic character, which the intent is to...
Yes.
You would be in favor of altering the historic character in favor of allowing private property owners to do this? Okay. Did you consider lowering the maximum height of a front yard fence, perhaps to three feet? Since three feet is pretty much the standard height that someone sitting in a regular car, looking out the window, can see over?
I think I've answered this five years ago. And the same answer is that standard fencing you buy from a contract yard is four feet generally.
Generally? Isn't it typically actually more than four feet? They call it a four-foot fence, but aren't they typically four and a half, five?
No, you can get four.
Okay. Wouldn't making it three lend to more custom-designed and nicer fences instead of the generic store-bought panels that people use?
Yes. But not everyone can afford that.
Okay. All right. I'm just going to go through some more notes here. Oh, under the discussion of vegetative barriers, I don't think anybody mentioned those tall seagrass things that people are planting all over the place lately. Would you include that as a vegetative hedge? Vegetative barrier, I'm sorry.
It would be included.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll move on to the lighting section then. Is that the one that we talked about? Let's see. We talked on October, I think. We talked about lighting. Yep. Okay. All right. Why was there... Why was the concept of making this retroactive discarded? I think the testimony was that none of this will apply retroactively to existing conditions. Why is that?
Well, it's... Well, let's... If, like Michael Sullivan said, if there was a board approval, planning board, zoning board, we have it on the books that there's an approval. And right now, we don't have, as you know, we don't have any other light standards. So when this goes into effect, all that lighting that went up legitimately with a permit but with no, because we had no, but no standards is grandfathered. Unless it can be demonstrated that someone's lighting is causing a health-safety issue, which then it would be a code enforcement, property maintenance issue, not a zoning issue.
That's the logic. Okay. All right. Did you consider lowering the Kelvin temperature to 2,700, which is actually what's recommended for nighttime outdoor lighting?
I'm going to ask Michael Sullivan to answer that.
Well, we set it at 3,000 as a maximum, figuring that we would hope to get it lower, but we didn't want to hamstring everybody who was coming in with anything lower than that. If the board thinks that we should go to a lower standard, we can investigate a lower standard. And realizing it might be more difficult for some applicants to meet it, but that it might produce a better lighting characteristic. So...
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that opinion. I concur. Okay. Did you consider in the lighting ordinance to put a graphic in there, similar to in the fence ordinance, that demonstrates visually what good fixtures are versus bad fixtures? I'm sure you're aware that those things are available in the model lighting ordinances?
No, we didn't consider a graphic.
Wouldn't that be helpful to the applicants in choosing proper fixtures?
I'm not sure, truthfully.
Okay.
I just, this is Michael Sullivan. If I could just say something. Anybody, any applicant who is going to be following this ordinance is going to hire a site civil or a lighting professional who is going to be well-versed in these technical requirements. And I don't think that the applicant themselves are going to need to have any more explicit direction than what we've provided. If this were for, you know, laypeople, then maybe that's the case. But these are fairly technical requirements.
Okay. Well, then I'm a little confused as to the applicability of this then. I think the testimony was previously that this would apply to all lighting throughout the city, not just those coming before a board.
Yes. But I'm unsure what... If someone's going to do pole-mounted lighting...
Well, any lighting.
Well, I thought, I'm not sure then what type of example you would want me to have as a handout.
There's graphics readily available in part of the model lighting ordinances that are also available by the IDA that show good fixtures, style, physically, styles of good fixtures that would meet the criteria and those that are not good fixtures that would not meet the criteria.
I think that's... I think that's a place as more as a handout because if it's what I think you're talking about, it's a multiple-page document.
It's one page, I've seen.
Because I was going to say, right now, like for signage and for fences, we have a whole other type of handout we give out at the office if we feel someone needs guidance.
Okay.
And I'm not...
Well, back to... I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And I was going to say, I'm not sure if what you're talking about will translate well in the ordinance because at the end of the day, this goes into our coded systems. And we have a specific, you know, on the city website as the codified ordinance. Not sure if what you're talking about will translate well with that.
Well, as I said, it's no different than the graphics part of the fence ordinance. What would make this any different than that?
Well, then I'm unsure of the type of drawings you're talking about.
I could certainly provide what I'm thinking of, if that's helpful.
Well, perhaps, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, is it possible to have a handout that maybe Werner can provide that at the office, that when people come in, they can be provided just like you do for fences or for anything else?
Right. That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay. Why don't we do that? If you could provide something, Werner, to Michelle?
Sure.
Then we can, you know...
It would be better to codify it, obviously, but sure, that's acceptable, I guess.
Okay.
Uh, regarding the the solar-powered reference, I I don't understand why photovoltaic slash solar-powered are carved out, uh. What 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 would make them any different? It's just a light. A light is a light, has nothing to do with the power source.
I'm gonna ask Michael to answer.
I think, I think the intention was that that would be, that the, uh, the cabling uh, aspects would not be applicable to those, because they may not have power cables running to them. Um, that that's the only exclusion that I can think of.
Oh, can we, can we find, can we find that paragraph? Uh, where's that at?
It's, it's on the screen.
Yes.
It's on the screen? Oh, great, let me, uh, let me, I gotta click my browser over. Um, okay, where's it at? Oh, here, okay, "There shall be a preference for lighting that is certified. The following shall apply to all exterior lighting." Yeah, hmm. You see, that doesn't make any sense. The the following shall apply to all exterior lighting except solar-powered. There's no reason I could see in my mind why you would exclude solar power from all the following requirements. They're just lights. The the power source has nothing to do with the light.
You you know what? Uh, this is Michael Sullivan. I I agree that needs to be cleaned up, and the, I think the only rationale for that exclusion was the underground cabling. That was the question about that, and somehow it got translated into this.
Yeah, so maybe that sentence, or a version of that sentence.
I was gonna say, ma'am chair, well, I'm fine with striking that sentence.
I think that makes sense, unless somebody else from the planning board does not feel that.
I, I think this is Jen Sauter, that came from the, um, as Michael was just saying, from, I remember the discussion, and it was related to three, I think, um, because there was a, a, there was a reference to the fact that some doesn't apply to, uh, photovoltaic, some photovoltaics.
Oh, number three, A3, so that sentence should be attached to A3 somehow, is what you're suggesting. Okay, maybe we can fix that. Is that, is that what I'm hearing, that that sentence is intended to be attached only to A3, not everything below?
That's what I recall. I don't know, Michelle, if you remember something different. I just remember, I remember the conversation, I, and I remember.
Yes, yes, so, um, but I think the language we we should get a little cleaned up, but yes. Saying all cute. Yes, except except we're really, except we're non-applicable, where there's no, it's more where there's no cabling, so yeah.
Okay. Um, now, there's also a section there about businesses turning off their lights when they're not operating. Can we bring up that paragraph? Uh, let's see, where was that? I think it's, uh, A6, I think. Or something like that.
Well, I believe, um, at our la- this was, um, yes, it's A6. We s- we, um.
You struck that.
We struck it at, because the board wanted it, decided to go that way.
Okay, I'm gonna make a suggestion. Um, is it possible that perhaps that concept that's, uh, written here about turning off lighting outside of business hours, is it possible that maybe it got transcribed into the wrong section and really was meant to apply to parking lots?
Well, I I don't think the board, I I'm not sure the board wants to shut off the lighting in parking lots.
Well, doesn't the IDA recommend that? Isn't that part of the model lighting ordinance, to turn off parking lot lighting when not used? One of the prime concepts, isn't it?
But what, not to argue this.
No, not arguing.
But what does not in use mean, really? For
Not open for parking.
For parking, not, I mean.
Parking, parking lots, not open for parking.
If it's a commer- there's a difference between a commercial parking lot and a residential parking lot.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, maybe, maybe that needs to be fleshed out a little bit more. Um, okay. Then this this issue of, um, let's see, oh, there's a, there's a wording problem in A2. Um, right there in front, in front of us, right in the middle of the screen, where it says legibility, I think you mean visibility. Legibility implies reading something. I think you need the word visibility there, visibility of site and building conditions.
This is Michael Sullivan. Uh, legibility is an important characteristic in lighting design so that you can perceive features as well as just being able to see something, so that is not a, uh, uh, mistake, that is an intent language.
It is? Well, okay, legibility typically talks about reading words. Legible? Illegible?
It's, it's also a term in lighting.
Okay. Alright. Okay, um, then, uh, alright, this issue about being retroactive, would you consider, um, making this retroactive to existing conditions that are approved?
I don't think-
Warner, what do you mean by that?
Well, the the question I asked earlier about the applicability of this ordinance, and the the answer was that if something was pre-approved and already installed, that none of this would apply. Uh, would would the board or would the professionals consider making this applicable to even those conditions which were previously approved that do not meet the current standards?
No. You can't do that. You can't do that. You, that that, in the nature of zoning, if they were approved, and I'm I'm gonna make, assume some facts here, and you correct me if you need to. Number one, let's say a project was approved ten years ago, and the lighting, uh, was in, uh, installed pursuant to the requirements back then. Subsequently, lighting changes. In the zoning context, it's no different than any other land use development ordinance. If an ordinance changes, uh, you have non-conforming rights to continue the non-conformities. Again, the caveat is, in the event it becomes a safety issue, a nuisance issue for contiguous property owners, things like that, then you go after it on a maintenance, uh, code violation. But you can't force previously approved, assuming they're complying. If somebody was to take something in and they're not complying, then the zoning officer can go out and say, hey, you're not complying, you have to comply with the standards that were in effect at the time your application was approved. You can't, you can't just deviate from them at at your own discretion.
Okay. Um, and also, I I assume also if the lights are changed for other fixtures, then this would kick in. If the existing approved non-conforming lights are removed, I'm assuming they can't put them back, just like as if a fence.
Correct.
That's
Yeah, yeah, it's no different. I mean, if they're gonna fix, if they're gonna repair the light fixture that's there, they're entitled to do it, but if they're gonna take them down, the non-conformity voluntarily has been taken down, just like a non-conforming fence.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. Okay, um.
Maybe Michael has something to add to that, I don't know, from his perspective, but.
I thi- I think the only thing I would add is that, um, we we've seen cases where, um, a lot of these older fixtures, um, can be retrofitted with new fixtures. Meaning that you could use the existing housing and the existing poles and the existing conduit to swap out high-pressure sodium with LEDs. If that happens, technically, there should be a review to conform to this ordinance. So it's not just removal, if they change the characteristic to the lighting, they must change the characteristics to conform with this ordinance.
Oh, excellent, I'm I'm glad to hear that, okay. Alright, um, let's go on to the landscaping then. Uh, I think that was the the other thing that was mentioned. Okay. On, uh, page two of the landscaping, uh, thirty fifty-seven twelve, I think it is.
Let me get there.
Yeah. Thirty dash fifty-seven point one-two? It's in there, somewhere.
Give me the citation again.
Uh, thirty fifty-seven twelve. Page two of the landscape part.
Here you go.
Fifty-seven twelve, beautiful. Okay, um, I was reading this, uh, oh, it's off the screen. Let's see.
Screen.
Bring it, bring it. Yeah, it's at the bottom, yeah, bring, bring that up a bit. Okay, uh, I'm just reading this, uh. Okay, now go down to two H in that section.
Uh-huh, about street trees?
There we go, two H, beautiful. Okay. Okay, this, this is problematic. This part H is in conflict with the other parts of our ordinance that define what a sidewalk is. Uh, and I noticed that sidewalk is used throughout this new landscaping ordinance profusely, and I think that needs to be all cleaned up, um, but to just ask the question, what are you defining as the sidewalk when when reading this? Street trees may be planted on either side of sidewalks. What are you, what are you, what are you defining as the sidewalk?
I'll tell you in a minute.
Okay.
I wanna go to our definitions section.
Don't think you'll find it there.
Right.
Okay, no, no definition for sidewalk in your definitions, correct?
Correct.
And there's a reason for that. Um, are you aware that there's an entire section of the code entitled sidewalks?
Yes, I am.
So you know, you know, a sidewalk, you know that a sidewalk is defined as that area between the curb line and the nearest adjacent property line. So that would mean this sentence is saying that you could put a tree on someone's front lawn or in the street is what this is implying.
Yes.
Okay, so that needs to be fixed. It should say walkway instead of sidewalk, correct?
But why would we not wanna, I don't understand why we wouldn't want a tree.
On either side of a walkway, correct? The concrete walkway, which is different than what a sidewalk is. I'll I'll testify to that later if I have to, to just clarify, okay? Uh, just wanted to bring that to light. Um, then on page four, this is three, if we go to page four, under, uh, five A1, five A1, okay. Again, we have the terminology of sidewalks being used incorrectly, in my opinion, I'll testify to that later. Um, but this is mentioning ground cover. Um, so as I read this, I'm I'm not clear how to interpret this. For example, A1, five feet by ten feet by two feet. Now, what what is that implying? The planting area, is is that the area that's dug up, literally, or is that the area occupied by the, um, the tree grate?
This isn't about a tree grate.
Well, shade tree planting area, says volume and surface cover. So the five feet by ten feet by two feet, what what is that area?
Planting area.
The planting area. That the hole that's dug for the tree to go into? Ten feet long?
No.
Five feet wide?
That's the, but that's the planting area, that's the right, even the 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 tree itself with its, its, um, trunk doesn't cover that, but the planting area does.
And where where is this located?
This is, this is a street tree planting between the sidewalk and the curb.
You mean between the walkway and the curb? The co- between the concrete walkway and the curb? You're defining an area of five feet wide by ten feet long?
Yes.
Okay. What what is that area? I'm not clear as to what that area is implying, and then it says with an exposed planting area of five by five. So what's the ten? What's the ten feet? That along the curb line?
What is vernacularly known as the planting strip?
For what purpose?
This is, this is Michael Sullivan, if I could just jump in here. What this is describing is the volume of the planting medium that is going to be placed in there where the tree would be placed. So it's five feet wide by ten feet long and two foot deep, you know?
So it's the trench, it's the the dug-up area?
That's exactly right, it's a volume.
Okay.
Describe it, this is describing a volume, five by ten by two feet deep. And this is saying that after that's done, then the remainder, uh, you you only have to leave exposed a five-by-five area. So you're actually excavating a larger area to provide for, uh, better, uh, root growth and plant viability. But you're allowed to cover back up a little bit of it, so.
Ah, thank you, thank you, and that that explanation applies to the subsequent paragraphs also. Okay, so then I'm looking at, um, "The remainder of the tree planting surface area shall be covered in pervious pavers, permeable pavement, or vegetative ground cover or mulch." Are you aware that that conflicts with the definition of sidewalk treatment in the city ordinances, which allows only concrete or grass?
I think that mulch is an acceptable material for around a tree planting.
Uh, this is the remainder of the tree planting surface, it says.
Yes.
Not the five by five. Or is that implying that's the five-by-five area? Because the way I read this is, there's an exposed five-by-five area, and then the remainder of the planting area surface, hence the ten by two by five, shall be this other stuff. That makes no sense.
Hmm, I don't know why it doesn't make sense.
Well, read it, it says there's
Remainder of the tree plant area, surface area shall be covered, basically, you can't have a a hole in the ground, or you have to, you have to, you can't have a dirt bed. You must cover the vegetative area with the pervious paper, permeable pavement, vegetative ground, cover or mulch. You can't have
That means, that means around the the tree base, around the trunk, is that what that's implying? Around the base of the tree is where you
Yes.
Well, that's not what it says, it says "An exposed planting area of five by five feet, the remainder of the tree planting area surface."
Yes.
Well, it's not the remainder, it's the five-by-five feet that's supposed to be covered with this stuff. The area around the tree.
That, and that's the way, this is Michael Sullivan, that is the way it is written. The vegetative ground cover was written to be flexible in terms of grass, that that could be grass. Um, it's unlikely we would have mulch, but, um, no one's brought up to me, um, in the in the drafting of this, any conflict with any other ordinance requirement. So if there is a conflict, then it should be looked at prior to us, uh, putting this into effect.
Right, what what I'm asking about is the wording right now, at this point, the interpretation of of the reading of this.
The word, what the word, what this is intended to say is that you're going to dig a planting hole that is ten by five by two feet deep. But that, once you're done, you're only gonna leave five by five of that exposed, which would be mulch, right? And then the remainder could be, so you're reading it, I believe correctly, pervious pavers, permeable pavement, uh, or ground cover, okay? That, that is exactly what this says and what would happen. Um, understanding that- Understanding that in a wide sidewalk that's 10 feet in width, there, outside of the 5 feet width of the planting area, you have another 5 feet of walkway. And that within this area that's going to cover the planting hole, this is intended to make sure that there is still water and air transmissivity into the planting medium.
Well, that, okay. So the way it's written is the way it's meant to be interpreted. A 5 by 5 area around the trunk of the tree, and then the remainder that was dug up previously gets this treatment.
Yes.
Okay. That seems rather odd. Okay, let me move on then. Let's go to the signage section, page 11, 30613.
Okay, what part of the signage?
Page 11, yeah, right there, all the way at the bottom. Where?
What letter?
Is that page 11? Y.
Okay.
Oh, I don't see it on the screen.
It's there.
Oh, there it is, okay. So we've struck out signs painted directly on buildings. Was any consideration given to preserving the historic character of buildings and the damage that's caused to them by painting on them?
No.
No consideration, okay, well, that answers that. All right. And then, one more thing. Let's see, no, I think, I think that's all the notes that I have here. Landscaping, explanation, historic character. Oh, the, um, let's see. Dirty distance explanations, oh, it's historic character. Okay. Oh, the signage, just a few, just a couple of questions about the signage. How will the zoning officer be trained in using a light meter to measure lighting and the brightness of signage in the mits? Will there be some sort of certification and an instrument that's calibrated and all of that, how is that all going to work?
Well, that, we haven't figured out quite yet.
Yeah, that wasn't testified to, but it does have to be figured out.
Okay, all right, thank you. Was any consideration to writing in a prohibition on painting signage on streets?
No.
And why not?
This is, this is, this is Michael Sullivan. Any signs that are not put up by the governing body or sanctioned by the city are illegal on public property. So if it's a public street, that sign would be illegal and it's prohibited by the sign ordinance.
Ah, okay, by default.
It's explicit, it's explicit in the sign ordinance.
Mm-hmm, okay, great. But that doesn't prevent a body like the council or planning board or zoning board to allow a non-conforming sign on public property, correct?
It does not prohibit the governing body from installing a sign on public property, but the board of adjustment or the planning board could not grant an approval that would bind the governing body to do so.
Right.
Because they can't do that.
That's what I thought.
Neither board has jurisdiction, that's purely a mayor and council issue, just like encroachments into city rights of way.
Understood, understood. All right, thank you. And is there some reason that under the discussion you had about vegetative barriers, that you just don't consider vegetative barriers to be a type of fence? Wouldn't that simplify things?
Actually, we had that discussion and we determined that the, that the side yards and the backyards are the ones that we would not consider them as fence.
Exclusive of a corner lot which has anything, which has a yard facing the street. The way I heard it was that you would still apply the standards to anything facing the public right of way, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, thank you, it's been great.
I don't see any other people have with their hand up for the public. So I have a motion to close public question.
Move it. Have a second?
A second.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, two people spoke at the same time. Who moved it and who was the second?
Mike Manzal moved it.
Okay, and second was?
Eric.
Yeah. Okay, voiced vote, Madam Chairwoman, okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Okay, can we proceed with, can I get a motion to open public comment, 3 minutes?
Jim Henry, so moved.
Second, Yvonne Clayton.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, ayes have it.
Okay, if we could have anyone that would like to provide a comment, 3 minutes? None, let me get my timer. Hey, it looks like we have someone with their hand up for comments, ending in 350. Can you please unmute for comments, 3 minutes, please?
Before my time starts, Ernest Magnoli, comments on anything relative to the planning board?
No.
Comments on tonight's?
Tonight and October, the last meeting in October about this?
Okay, which are mostly the modifications to the, to the plan that you've been going on?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so if I could start, I would appreciate it. Okay, Ernest Magnoli, 400 D L A Drive, Apartment 5D. So I don't think you're going to actually give me the time because you like to cut my time short and cut me off.
He raised your right hand.
Actually, and I, you know, mister, just be quiet, it's my time.
Please mute.
Can you be-
Digital, mute him.
Right. Mr. Magnoli, our intention was that when you do comments, we have to swear you in. And that's what mistress, go ahead.
All right, so please, Mr. Magnoli, please raise your right hand.
Please unmute, Mr. Magnoli.
Okay, my hand is raised.
Okay, thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the-
I do.
Thank you, proceed.
Okay, so as a 15-year homeowner in Asbury, and someone who's, I guess you'd say fairly active in meetings and open meetings with the city, I'd like to comment on these processes that I see. One of the problems I have is, it seems like all the professionals seem to be out-of-towners. It seems like the people on the boards tend to be, in so many ways, involved, I mean, personally, socially, politically, in every way possible. So that, the trend is that I've noticed, especially in the last 5 years, is that less and less of the public is willing to take the risk of calling in because of the way we're treated, which is not kind, it's not concerned, it's not congenial, it's nothing. It's just something like, this is how we do it, this is how we're going to do it, and you know, that's it. And then you tend to rile people so that it becomes worse, and then you mute them and you move on. And that's why Asbury looks the way it does. It's a mess. In 15 years, I've seen Asbury become a horrible, hodgepodge mess. You change things at the whim of a developer, at the whim of a lawyer, or of an application, then you try and back into saying, no, we didn't mean that, we mean this. And, you know, listening to it, it's hard to believe that a town of 15,000 people with I don't know how many homeowners, wouldn't be outraged. And it seems like the only number I always hear calling up is 3350. I don't like being the only one, but you got to understand something. The way people, and I talk to a lot of residents, homeowners in Asbury, the way they view what's going on with these boards and these zoning and planning and the council meetings, is it's a train wreck that you can't stop, it's out of control. And if you try to stop, you get on this retaliation list that all of a sudden, you're going to get pulled over, you're going to get parking tickets, you're going to be character assassinated, you're going to have profanity put up next to your name all over the city, you're going to be called a visaphobe and thataphobe and a who knows whataphobe, and that's your payment. They're like trying to save what used to be a nice family city, which is turning into a crime scene. Corruption, drugs, sex crimes, you know, out of control, million-dollar condo mania, you know, wild abuses of fair housing, claiming that, well, we're going to build 50 million-dollar condos and we're going to have 3 affordable. What kind of deal is that? What does that say for the people in Asbury? It said, start looking somewhere else.
Mr. Magnoli, your 3 minutes are up, thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the lack of inter- I thank you, I appreciate the lack of interruption, thank you.
We have one other person that has their hand up, please, city historian. Please unmute. Hi, Jack.
Okay, Werner?
Yes.
Yes. Please raise your right hand.
Shoot.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give in this matter be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Werner Baumgartner, 402 Fifth Avenue, appearing as city historian.
Okay, go ahead.
I would just preface my commentary by saying, I've observed these interactions with the boards and the effects on the city for over 40 years. So I hope you take my commentary as someone who's kind of watched it evolve over time. Perhaps you can give me a little bit of leeway, I have a lot to tell you about, perhaps. The fence ordinance, I've spoken about fence ordinances for decades, and I'm very pleased that it's finally being updated and addressed, but I think it's still woefully inadequate. The main issue I have with it at this point is the order in which the information is presented. There's a section called, you know, general regulations, which is at the bottom of the ordinance. It would make more sense for somebody reading it to get the general concepts up front, then the applicability in the middle, and then the specifics at the end about what's permitted and what's not. So I think the entire order of how these paragraphs are presented in the fence ordinance need to be reversed, from the general to the applications to the specific, in order to make it more digestible to the common person. Also, I really do appreciate your discussion about vegetative barriers, that was something that I found to be very troubling. My perspective is from the historic character of Asbury Park. And the historic character is decidedly wide-open spaces and view corridors, absent fences, absent vegetative barriers in the fronts of buildings. The emphasis was always on presenting the beautiful architecture of the homes against a nice green front lawn with some minimal landscaping. So whatever you can do to keep that aesthetic is certainly of benefit to the entire city and to the master plan. So that's why I recommended you perhaps change your 3-foot heights in the front to 4, your 4-foot heights in the front to 3-foot, or perhaps consider eliminating front yard fences in their entirety. Since that's not likely, addressing the vegetative barriers as fences is certainly welcomed. Let's see. All right, I'll talk about-
All right, Werner, you have about a minute.
Well, I hope you give me a little bit of slack here as a city official. I think what I have to say is very useful to you, thank you. The lighting ordinance, also a welcome addition. I do think that it needs to be fixed a little bit with some visual aids for the common person, because I think that developers may hire professionals to do their lighting, but the general person picking this up to find out what lights are permitted for their home would benefit from having some visuals about what's good and what's bad. As far as the landscaping, this needs to be gone over with a fine-tooth comb regarding references to sidewalks. There's an entire chapter that defines what a sidewalk is. And as I stated earlier, a sidewalk by city code is that area defined between the curb and the nearest adjacent property line. That is the sidewalk. The part you walk on, the concrete, is the walkway or the walk. So that needs fleshed out, specified, and corrected throughout this document. As far as the signage goes, painting signs on buildings should remain prohibited. This is one of the most harmful things to brick-basonry unpainted buildings that there is. There's a lot of historic fabric left, particularly in the downtown, and paint is the enemy of brick. As soon as you paint brick, you are stuck with it permanently, as evidenced by the shadows of advertising signs that date back 50, 60, 70 years that are still embedded in the brick. That's why painting signage on buildings is prohibited in general. It's very difficult to remove or alter. So I would suggest you put that back in order to preserve the historic character of our brick architecture here. Let's see, one more thing, fences, lighting, signage, oh, landscaping, yeah, this issue, this issue of the ground cover surrounding tree pits. Look throughout the town, and you'll notice that 99% of all the streetscape is grass, the curb strips are grass. You need to flesh out where you're going to allow bricks, such as downtown, but I think you should take a similar tactic, that the ground cover at the curb strip should be consistent with the predominant ground cover in the neighborhood, and not allow deviation from that. That, again, alters the historic character of the communities. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. There are no other people that, from the public that have their hands up? So motion to close public comment?
Move it, Mike Manzal.
Second?
Second.
Yvonne Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
Second, Henry.
I'm sorry. Jim Henry, what about? Did you make a comment?
You're okay, Jim? Did you second it, Jim?
No.
Wow.
I think his signal is delayed.
Okay, I think Yvonne seconded it and Michael made the motion or-
Yes.
I'm reading the motion, I thought.
I just wasn't sure what he said. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Hearing none, the ayes have it.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
I thought Jim was frozen.
Okay, are there any, after hearing everything that we've heard from tonight, are there any modifications that we're looking to make besides the ones that we've already agreed to during discussion, public discussions? By the planning board before we go for a vote?
It's more-
This would be limited to part 1, correct? I'm sorry, John, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jack.
This is limited to part 1, according to that outline, correct? Okay, just want to make sure I got the right scorecard, thank you.
Yes. Yes. Go ahead, John.
Okay, the ones that, uh, Michael Sullivan said, okay, we're gonna change that, we're gonna read those all back?
No, no, don't, those are, those I think that, that we can go through, that, that we can say that the ones that Michael had mentioned and the ones that, um, Michelle already mentioned are assumed to go through. Are there any others that, based on public comment or question or other concern that they would like, uh, to be considered to be included?
Okay, it's Moore again. I think Warner makes a good argument about the definition of walkway and sidewalk, so what are we gonna do with that?
Uh, you're, you're muted, Michelle.
I want to say that I believe that the two do not have to align the, because sidewalk is a, is a common zoning term, walkway is not. And I would prefer, if we need to fix it, we fix it with the general definition section in that we say that the side, you know, sidewalk and we'd say can, um, refers back to that walk to, to, uh, the other chapter, but I believe that would be the way to fix it, but I do not wanna let go of the word sidewalk.
Then, then would it be acceptable, Mr. Moore? Go ahead, John.
It's not me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, what I, I would think that, that putting it into the definition area would probably be a good way to take care of this, as we have in many other things. So if we could do that in that area, um, I would also like to consider, and Michael, um, if you guys can help me out here, is that Warner had suggested about 2,700 versus 3,000? Is there an issue there with the Kelvin? That lighting?
I, I don't think there's an issue there, I think that's a simple change, um, and it'll warm up the, the lighting.
That would, I would like to add that, if that's okay with the board?
I'm agreeable to that, this is Mike.
Okay. Um, anything else, anybody else would like to, uh, consider modifying? I know that we had requested, uh, Warner to provide the visuals, and I think that Michelle agreed that she would include those if someone came to the office for the, uh, for the lighting. So, uh, we'll ask Warner to, to provide that.
Um, we'll clean up the, the language about the solar light.
Yeah, said that, that you'd agree to, yes.
Yes.
Okay, Moore again, I'm, I'm just confused. If Warner, and maybe I heard it wrong, if Warner says we already have a definition of sidewalks in a different ordinance, and I think, uh, Michael Sullivan said, well, we can't have two different documents, one says one, one says another, so if the definition someplace in the city is a sidewalk, is the space between the curb and the owner's property line, that, that's the definition of sidewalk by another ordinance, or whatever Warner said it was, so how can we not accept that it's the definition?
Because that's a, I, that's a separate section in the city code, but I, I think we, we can, I mean, Michael Sullivan says he doesn't believe we can have a different, different definition. I believe we can, as long as we make a reference to the other definition.
For the record, I don't think I was the one who said you can't have two definitions, but I think that if, if you want to somehow distinguish these two things, because, um, one is talking about a space and one is talking about a site element. The site element is what we've been calling the sidewalk, the walk, the wa, or, or vice versa. So, um, the intention of that, at least the section we were talking about, was to provide flexibility to put a tree on the most appropriate side of whatever that sidewalk was. Sorry, I just determined. I'm not familiar with the other section of the code, it's not the zoning code that deals with that, so I'm not familiar with it, so I can't tell you tonight how to resolve it.
Couldn't we just, if I may, couldn't we just put in parentheses?
Jim Henry, how, how about this, uh, for a compromise? In the, uh, section dealing with, uh, the tree planting, say, for the purposes of this section, sidewalk is the distance between, or the area between the face of the curb and the adjacent property line, and the walkway is the paved area, uh, on which you walk.
If I may.
That gives you right up front what you're talking about.
I, I may have a simple solution to this. We're talking about, as Michael put it, one, one is a definition of an area, which is very detailed in that section of the ordinance in and of itself, and this is just specifically the physical sidewalk that we're talking about, if that's correct. Can't we just put after that word sidewalk within this provision of the zoning ordinance in parentheses? For purposes of this section, sidewalk is synonymous with walkway? Close parentheses, wouldn't that solve the problem?
I think it should.
I agree with that.
Okay.
So why not just put that in, and this way we know what we're talking about, we're giving, give it a point of reference in parentheses, that's all.
Okay, ready? All right, one other thing I'd like to bring up about the parking lot lights. Um, I don't know, maybe I don't understand it well enough, but it sounds within reason that if an establishment is closed, then the lights should go off, is that, am I wrong?
That's what it says, it says for a commer, it does say-
Yeah, for non-residential.
Right. All right, let me, I stopped sharing screen, um-
Okay.
Let me, um, because I believe that's what it says, that for a commercial parking lot, you have to shut it. Let me find, go to it.
Is there any public safety component, though?
Yeah.
That's what I'm concerned about.
That's what I was gonna bring up, too, it, I think i- if, if an establishment is clearly closed and there's no one entering, like, if it's a supermarket parking lot, that's one thing, but if it's a public parking lot, you really, I mean, there's a very few times where the lot is 100% empty, so I think there's a safety concern when, when the lights are off.
Yeah.
Right, that's why I was starting to make the mention of the residential, you know, um, and it does say when closed, um, I'm still looking.
I, I think there's a public safety component to it, and, I mean, I'll even just point out, like, the bank at Sunset Avenue in Maine, it's a large parking lot for that PNC bank, but it has lighting at night.
Yeah, I, I guess I would also, I don't see parking, sur- surface parking lot lighting much different than typical, traditional street lighting, right?
Has a, maybe an experience of this?
The language, the language we use in here says except for security lighting.
Right.
So, so we do provide for that, and I think when we discussed this, this same conversation evolved in terms of, well, do we want it completely off, or can it be at a lower level where, um, it, the lights are, oh, Michelle, you confused me, but I'm okay, um, where the lights, um, you know, fewer lights are lit, or with LEDs, sometimes they have step-down transformers, where the step-down transformers can have a lower voltage that, that brings it down. So I don't think we're saying that, um, it's gotta be completely dark.
I, I, I hope not. So, so is the, is the, the, uh, thought of the board to, uh, leave it as is?
Yes.
It sounds, sounds like that.
I think so.
Okay, does anyone else have anything else that they would like to have included or discussed before we vote? With the assumption that everything we've discussed, that we agreed to put in, will be put in. Nothing else? All right, then I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to approve what's been presented, and along with all the modifications that we discussed today, both during the planning board comment and, uh, I'm sorry, the, the planning board questions and comments, public question and public comment section, and after that, that everything that we discussed would be included.
Okay.
That we agreed to.
We have a second.
I'll second it, Mike Manzella.
Before we vote, uh, just till I under, make sure I understand procedurally what I'm doing, um, when we're all done with all of the components that have been sent over to us for review by the mayor and council, we would do one, typically do one resolution, written resolution with the report containing all of the recommendations, which I believe would be in various parts, part one tonight, part two next meeting, and so on. So if that's okay, that's the way I'd like to proceed with this, based on what we've done in the past, and I'm not gonna do three separate resolutions or four separate resolutions, it's all one package that's been sent to us, we're just approaching it in a piecemeal basis. Still gets us to the same place, uh, if that's okay with everyone. The only difference might be is if we have different members that don't show up, and I might get some different votes, then I could be forced to have to do it individually, but I think it would make sense to do it all at once, if that's okay with the board. Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, roll call, uh, on the motion, John Moore?
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry? Jim?
Jim's frozen, frozen.
I'll come back to him. Jennifer Sauter?
Yes, Jennifer Sauter.
Thank you. Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Eric Galipo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Robert Krasak?
Yes.
Thank you, and once again, Jim Henry?
Let me see if we can call him.
Okay.
Hang on. Um, Michelle, while, while I'm calling Jim, did you send out the, uh?
I'm doing it right now.
Oh, hi, Jim?
He said yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, then, uh, it's adopted for that part by unanimous vote.
Okay, we need to get to the executive session resolution?
Yes, we do.
Yes. Give me one second.
Yes.
Rejecting one email, wait. Let me do it again.
Okay.
Just give me a sec.
That's fine, I'm trying to find my resolution.
It's on, it's on the screen.
Oh, okay, well, I have it in front of me also, fill out. Okay, thank you, Bob.
Okay, I sent the email.
Okay.
If anyone on the screen did not get it, let me know.
I have no idea.
Okay, the, the in- information we should have come from, uh, from Michelle, all of you should be getting an email that provides you with a Zoom, um, link for the executive session. Once you go into that session, don't go yet, but once you go into that session, this session will end for you, but the session will continue because we have to come back and we have to adjourn the meeting and provide information if we have come to a conclusion, we have to provide information and then adjourn the meeting in this session. So, there are two things in the email, one thing, the first one is an executive session Zoom link, and the second thing is the rejoining of the Zoom link, of, of, through Zoom. So you got two things to, to do. So, Jack, we have to go through the resolution approval now?
Yes.
And, uh, I'll make a motion to, um, approve this resolution to have an executive session tonight?
Yeah, for the purposes set forth in, uh, Exhibit B 002, to discuss staff appointments for the calendar year 2021.
Yes.
We have a second.
Jim Henry, second.
Okay, while we're, uh-
Oh, I have to have a vote on that?
No, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the ayes have it.
All right, Michelle, Michelle, did you also send that, um, link to Jack, since he has to go in, come with us?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Anyone on the screen, has anyone not received the email from me?
I have.
I, I've received it, anyone else have not? Raise your hand if you have not.
I won't know till I sign off.
Okay, all right, um, all right, why don't we just take a moment, because we didn't take our five minutes, and while we each, all of us go out of our Zoom and into the executive session, um, let's do that, so we, we should meet roughly 9:52 or so, 9:55, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, motion, uh, to, uh, take a recess of the regular meeting, and then we're gonna be going into an executive session.
Seconded by Alexis Taylor.
Moved by?
Moved, moved by Barbara.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the ayes have it.
Okay. Hopefully we'll see you again.
Okay.
Don't all of you go away. All right, let's, uh, call the meeting to order.
All right, it is, uh, 10:38, I will take the roll. Uh, John Moore?
Here.
Yvonne Clayton?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Jennifer Sauter?
Here.
Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Eric Galipo?
Present.
Rick Lambert?
Present.
And Robert Krasak?
Here.
All nine members are in attendance, we're good to go.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see that, that some peoples chose to hang around. Um, what, uh, after, just, uh, after the executive session, uh, we had a discussion about the 2021, um, professionals and whether we're going to go out for RFP RFQ for anyone, and, um, the board, uh, decided that, that we are going to be going out for planner and conflict planner, we will be going out for bid for them, RFP RFQ.
Okay. Uh, any discussion on that?
Um, we discussed there.
No, I'm just saying, any, any further discussion? Okay, none, uh, you want a motion for that?
Yeah, can I get a motion to, uh, that, uh, that the planning board will be for 2021? The planning board will be going out for RFP RFQ for planner and conflict planner.
Jim Henry, so moved.
Seconded Alexis Taylor.
Hold on one second, I'm not quite as efficient as, uh, Irene. Okay, uh, oh, let's get a vote on that, uh, Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Galipo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Robert Krizak?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess I can talk to Michelle and figure that all out, the procedure, the paperwork on all that, on the how-to. Or I can get, I've never done it other than when I had to go out and fill out some paperwork.
Well, I think that generally Michelle's office takes care of most of it, actually.
No, I don't want to do it. I just want to make sure that somebody does it.
No, I'm going to have a discussion with Michelle tomorrow because there's some things we want to include in there that we haven't included in the past. So I'm going to have that discussion with her and if you'd like to, that's fine, but.
No, 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 I'm fine. If you're going to take care of it, that's fine with me.
I'll take care of it.
Great. Okay, any further business?
No. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Did we say we were carrying this thing to the next time, what we were doing tonight?
What? Oh.
No, we should, we should. Good idea. Yeah, it's just going to be continued at the next meeting, correct?
No, no, no.
Or what meeting?
We're booked through February.
Oh, okay.
Hang on, hang on. Let me find, let me find our next available. Yeah, we're booked through February at this point.
Okay.
Hang on.
Are we close to the end? Is this something we should have a special meeting for to wrap up? So I mean, I know there's some people that are waiting for the actual zoning ones about fences and everything, so.
Yep, our next availability is March 1st. So either, unless the city wants to do a special meeting, our next opening is March 1st.
Will the council extend the time sufficient to go to March? Because we had that, originally you had the 35-day provision, but obviously that's been extended. Will the governing body wait that long?
Pretty sure they will.
That's fine. I mean, just, you know, I just don't want to see us get backed into a corner.
I can't speak for everybody, but I don't have a problem with it.
Is this our last meeting in 2020?
Next week.
Okay.
No, we have the beach, we have the beach club next week.
Yeah.
The only problem in March to me, and I have no problem extending either, but I can't talk for the entire council. I know some council people were like, when's this going to wrap up? Because some residents were really moaning and groaning about like the zoning part. As far as like, you know, people buying houses and once this is through, they're not going to be able to. They just buy them for short-term rentals. So I don't know if you're going to get three votes, six, and that's all.
I mean, Barbara, maybe we can have a conversation with Michelle and Donna tomorrow about maybe a special meeting?
Yeah, I'm fine. I just don't know how special meetings run or who pays for them and how does that work? But I think that I believe that the planning board would be okay with doing a special meeting.
I'm fine with it.
All this is being paid for by the city eventually or the planning board. So it's not like it's causing the applicant or anything. So if the city paid for it in March or the planning board paid for it in March or whoever paid for it in March, what's the difference if they paid for it in January? Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
Right.
No, I'll speak to Michelle about that also tomorrow because I have to speak to her anyway.
Okay, it's just, again, some people are really looking forward for an answer about some zoning problems that have come up at the zoning board meetings.
Okay, all right, so I'll talk to her about getting, see if we can get a special meeting like in January or something like that and work through that.
I think in particular because I remember the planning board can't meet in January until after the council meets. So I think having a special meeting in January, I don't know, I wouldn't object to it.
Yeah, as long as it's after the reorg date.
Right.
Yeah, and our reorg date is like the 11th, so it's late anyway.
Right.
So, okay.
Well, you want to carry temporarily to March 1st with the potential of 2021, with the potential for possible special meeting at a date sooner? Okay.
That's good.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call will be John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Mike Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yep.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Galipo?
Yep.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Robert Krizak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. And anything else before we make a motion to adjourn? All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, so that's Barbara, okay, and Mike Manzella. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.